With you doing the finger countdown, it makes me feel a little bit like I'm the nightly news guy. The time is nine o'clock. I'm going to call the B County Commissioners Court Regular Term Meeting to Order. Today's Monday, July 12th, 2021. At 9:00 a.m., we're physically located at the B County Courthouse, Commissioners Court Room Number 110105, West Corpus Christi Street, Beale, Texas, 78102. That is Agenda Item Number 1, the call to order. Agenda Item Number 2, prayer. Mr. Willow, will you please lead us in a prayer?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Please go before us today and every day this week. When we face challenges, help us remember that all things have brought us through, all things that you have brought us through in the past. Help us trust that you have not brought us this far for us to fail and don't abandon us now. Please help us be strong in your power and might and help us walk confidently in your truth so we can have faith without fear, trust without hesitation, calmness in the face of stress, and your peace no matter what we face. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, we ask all these things. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing. Join me in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord, and to the covenant of marriage. And to the covenant of marriage, one intention, under God, indivisible, the liberation in such as are all.
And the Texas Pledge, honor under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one faith, under God, one individual. Thank you. Good morning. We have several visitors that are here this morning. Welcome. Thank you all for being here. I don't know if any of y'all are intending to speak at public comment. You're more than welcome to. We look forward to hearing from you if you choose to do so. At this time, this is an actual agenda item where we recognize the visitors. If anybody would like to stand up, identify themselves for the court, we'd be more than happy to. No comment, but just, hey, I'm so-and-so and I'm here. I'd be happy to have you do that at this time.
I'm Kathleen Trowell and I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Trowell. Good to see you and thank you for being here. Is there anybody else that would like to identify? Yes, or Ms. Brown?
I'd like to say something.
Oh, during public comment, not right now.
I thought that's what you said.
No, sir. I'm sorry. I was trying to separate the two. And I don't really know why we have them separated like we do. But we have Agenda Item Number 4, which is recognize the visitors. And aside from saying hello, I'm not really sure what that Agenda Item is for. Then we're going to go into Commissioners Court Opening Remarks and then Public Comment. So I wanted to get to Public Comment. I'll call in you first, Mr. Brown.
I'm Harold Butler and I'm here.
Hey, Mr. Butler. Thank you for being here this morning, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to identify themselves at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 5, Commissioners Court Opening Remarks. I can't remember from time to time. Who do we go first? It's you, Commissioner Lenny?
All right, go ahead. Sound excited. Oh, Monday. Did you say it's Monday? Monday. Monday. All right. First, I'd like to thank John Benson, the City Manager. We had that big rain the other day. People off West Bowie were calling me. They were literally, the water was literally going into their homes. People would drive down Minnesota and cause enough waves to actually push water inside their homes. And I called Mr. Benson about 7:30 and he got the city over there cleaning out that drain ditch behind, between the West Bowie and the Junior High. And a lot of happy people over there now. Also, Ray Gonzalez, want to thank him. He had a lot to do with getting on Blueberry Hill that private real road. They got it paved and I think we're going to discuss on turning that into a county road. Thank you for that. I went and looked at all that. Great job. Looks great. Also, Mr. John, I mean, I'm sorry, Bill Ordner called about some potholes out on Vigo Road. And again, Ray took care of that quickly. Also, Ray, thank him for, on the County Road 314, for taking the boom mower out there and cleaning all that up. That looks great. We did a cleanup again on Corpus Christi Street from Lightburn to Jackson and back. Keep this in mind, there was four of us, two men and two women. And we weeded it, we mowed the business front, the residential front that faced Corpus Christi, and went back and we sprayed a brownkill on the sidewalks, the cracks and whatnot. We got all that done in one day, four of us. Can you imagine if there'd have been 10 or 15? Robbie Guerrero and I, we went and cleaned up illegal dumping on Vigo Road. Mowed a couple of lots for people that was just, oh, their grass is six foot plus. Future stuff, I'm going to be putting together a cleanup, probably in the beginning of August sometime, at the San Pedro Cemetery. We put some bins out there, Mr. Arturo Gaisan and I, and put some bins out there for people to put their, the flowers and decorations they weren't using any longer to keep it clean. So I'm just tiling it up and that's worked out really well. But we want to actually go out and clean the rest of the cemetery up because it's getting overgrown. And I don't really know who takes care of that, so we're going to do that. And then the last thing, just a reminder, the Councilman Benny Fuente is going to do a cleanup in Ward 2, which falls part of my precinct on the 24th. And they're going to be doing, Wednesday is either all day Saturday or maybe Saturday and Sunday. But they'll be out there, so I know he's asking for volunteers to go out and help with that. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Witt.
Thank you, sir. I have several things. Some of it is just basic information. I know the Commissioners Court know this, but the general public sometimes gets confused about what is a county road? What is a street? What is a foreign market? So we're going to kind of go over that a little bit because I got several calls with all this rain about problems with foreign market roads, and those are not our jurisdiction. So if you will, bear with me here. I'm going to read some notes that I put down. The county takes care of county roads and streets in unincorporated towns. Technically, those streets in Papalote, Skidmore, Tynan, Pettis, Pawnee, Mineral, those are county roads. But everybody calls them streets. And they may be called avenue or whatever on the sign, but those are county roads that the county maintains over. Foreign market roads, we do not. That belongs to Texas. In the 1930s and 40s, the state of Texas came in and said, you know what? We're going to pave these foreign market and up in the hillside as ranch roads and make those so the farmers and ranchers can get their products from their ranches and farms to the markets. They went in and took over a lot of county roads and made them foreign markets. And if you've ever wondered, like from Pettis to Mineral, why that road is so crooked? When you get near the children's home and one thing or another, it followed the old county road line. And if you will, the people, from my observation, the people in North Beach County were a little more belligerent way back when, about giving part of their property for a county roadway. So there's 90 degree angles on some of those turns, especially if you get off the main roadway and go out where those ranches and farms are. I know my Ken folks, there's 90 degree angles around the property and the county roads kind of go around them. And they would not let people use their property for roads, so they had to go around it. So streets and county roads, streets in those unincorporated towns. And everybody knows there's only one incorporated town in B County, that's Beale. The rest are unincorporated. They don't have a police force. They don't have dog control, one thing or another. And that's one of the reasons. A lot of people moved to the county to get away from the taxes and a lot of the regulations. But when you get new people moving to those areas, they think they should get the same consideration they got in Houston or Dallas or Austin. It's not there. The Sheriff's Office does a fantastic job of patrolling those and maintaining the law and order there. Our Roden Bridge people do a great job with the roads. Our Community Affairs Department does all the septic and sewer hookup connections. It works out well. But just for information, foreign markets, state highways, interstates, those are all Texas responsibility. I have several calls about culvers needing cleaning, one thing and another. I've got ahold of some of the Texas folks. They're going to take a look at it. They're legally restricted, just like we are, on what they can and can't do when it comes to your personal culvert, your interest to your property, but they will do what they can. They're working as hard as they can, just like our folks are. So that's a little instruction on that. Another thing we need to think about is what is a public easement? Okay, in your mind, travel with me to Tulsa. Tulsa is north of Pettis, about three miles on the left. It was planted, and I'm guessing now, 1890 to 1910, somewhere in there. The lots are 35 foot wide by 130 some odd feet long. It never was developed into a city. It was named after Tulsa, Oklahoma, because of the oil boom in Pettis. And it's called Tulsa, which is Little Tulsa. Been working with some folks that bought some tax sale lots in Tulsa about a year ago. And as a caveat and a warning to people that buy tax sale property, there's a reason it's on sale, like it is. You may pay $100 for a lot and find out you can't use it for anything. And I'll explain exactly what's going in Tulsa. Working with two ladies that bought several lots apiece and they want access to those lots. Tulsa was platted. The county accepted the plat way back when. Those roads still exist on paper. Some of them the county accepted '73 or '74 when the legislature said, you have to accept roads. You're going to maintain. The others, you're not. We accepted several of those roads that we do maintain on a regular basis. They're paved. The other existing, let's call them public easements, they're no longer roads, are still there, although they're not maintained by the county. If you own property at the end of a quote "public easement," you have a right to go down that public easement to your property. What the county normally does with that, if that public easement is totally within the bounds of your property, let's say you buy a piece of property and when you look at the deed, it says there's a county road goes into it stopped. The county normally does what they call a quitclaim deed and deeds that property to you at no cost to you to get your deed cleared up and put it back on the tax road. We do that regularly in Skidmore, Tynan, and Pettis, everywhere, all over the county. When there are multiple property owners on a public easement, we can't do that because who is going to wind up with the property so it remains a public easement? And that's what we determine in Pettis. Mr. Gonzalez and I, he talked to the legal folks in Austin. We met with the ladies in my offices last week and we explained to them, yes, these are public easements. You're entitled to use them. And they said, well, the people living there look at us really strange when we go down there. And I talked to the people and they said, well, it was overgrown. We went in, shredded it, cleaned it, and put in Caliche so we could park there and go down it. And explained to them, it's a public easement. You can't block traffic on it. The rest of the story now, when I got a flood plain map of Tulsa, almost the entire town site is a flood zone. I explained that to these ladies and I gave them a copy of the map. I said, ladies, listen. You paid, I said, how much did you pay for these lots? Well, it's $250. And they're on the tax rolls for $410, I think. I said, to build there, you're going to have to build out of the flood zone. If you put in a septic system and a water well, it's got to meet flood zone requirements. I said, it's going to be extremely expensive. I said, think about what you're doing before you go much further. What are you going to do with the property? Well, it's ours. We want to develop it. I appreciate that. But before you go too far and start putting a bunch of money into it, be reminded you're in a flood zone. Probably 90% of Tulsa, the flood zone, the Medio Creek is just west of Tulsa. There's a little bridge out there. The water backs up. During all this flooding, the water did not get over that bridge. And it can rain 10 inches in B County and it's not going to affect the Medio Creek in that end of the county. But if it rains 10 inches in Karnes County, Pettis is flooded, the whole area is flooded because it runs down that creek real quick. So my advice, be aware if you're buying tax sale property. Just because you think you're getting a good deal, whether they say, if you think it's too good to be true, it probably is. So they now have four or five lots apiece that they need to think about what they're going to do. The other thing I have, for you naturalists out there and plant specialists, we have some very interesting plants in North Beach County. I won't tell you exactly where they are because like an archaeologist finds an archaeology site, you don't tell people where it is because the first thing you do is go up there and destroy it. Our Native American, Gadi Bandan, Gadi, Gaván, found some plants that are, they're called Manfreda maculosa. The plant itself is interesting in that it's a native version of this plant that a lot of people have in their flower bed. But it's a native version that only, it's the only plant that a butterfly called a skipper uses. Now, the skipper hasn't been seen in Texas since 1965. It could be totally extinct. But, and I'll read off some of these people that were there, this, you think this isn't a big deal until I read off who was there and where they're from. We met out there last Friday. There was Chris Best, State Biologist with Fish and Wildlife Service. Jade Florence, Dangerous Species Biologist, Fish and Wildlife. Darren Kirchhoff, he's doing a prairie restoration out of Santorot. Mariana Wright, National Butterfly Center out of Mission. Stephanie Lopez, National Butterfly Center out of Mission. I was there. Mr. Robert Benson led the group. He's a fantastic naturalist. He knows what he's doing. His wife has the article that she runs in the newspaper. She ran a little bit about this Manfreda maculosa a couple of weeks ago in the paper. I think she's going to run a follow-up on what we did. And then a Dr. Christopher Gebber, he's a professor at Brownsville. I've worked with folks like this before and they were literally bouncing. They were so excited about finding these plants. They took quite a few seeds with them. They want to try to reproduce this colony of plants in their area to try to encourage this butterfly to come back. So it's been an interesting, it's been an interesting wet season. County Road 104, if you would, needs some work. And I know that Roden Bridge is on it. Probably the next time we do some work, probably need to look at putting hot oil and rock in. So with that, I will pass to my colleague, Gillette.
It's been a busy two weeks. We had conference and then during conference, all the rain and what have you. But I had a couple of roads that were really blocked off. Ellis Road East was, had cut off some people completely for about four hours. So they were okay with that. And then we had a few culvers that were blocked off in Blanconia. I had a lot of calls from Blanconia. And so the rain has subsided now, so it's okay. An update on the progress for the Elections Administration Building. They were mobilized on July the 19th to begin demolition. They've received their permit. I will meet with them on Thursday to schedule a pre-construction meeting with Noble Construction and we'll move forward with that. So that's just an update to report because you guys know what's going on there. And other than that, that's on the list.
I have nothing to report. Yes, I do. Along with the conference, I too have been inundated with a lot of water. Yeah, Corgan Road, I, again, I want to thank the city for the loan of a pump. We're now pumping Tohe Circle for the second time this year, which is something we've never done before. I think we did it once, four and a half years ago. Mr. Gonzalez and his crew, outstanding on going out there, trying to move the water and get it moving. Again, I want to thank Mr. Starks for loaning us the property to dump the water on and Mr., I'll call him Judge Lyra, he's been judge for years, for allowing us to run the hose across there. Ray and I are going to get with, as soon as one of my grants come in, we're going to do some studies. We're going to look at something different than what we're doing right now at Tohe Circle. Went out to Corgan Road, Corgan Road 610, huge issue right there. Again, Mr. Gonzalez and I spent a couple of days, a couple of days out there with that and the landowners. On the part about landowners, I want to, I want to comment that it's actually a privilege to live in this county. And I feel humbled that most of the people in this county understand 10, 12, 14 inches. I think Papalote at one point got 17 inches off the back of 628. These people are very understanding. They know that the water is going to come up. It's going to go down. Yes, they get a little excited when it's almost cresting to the top of their house. I sympathize with them. But when you go out and you meet with them and then you bring Ray and his outstanding crew show up out there with machinery and even hand tools, they feel that, okay, it's being taken care of and they understand. And so I want to thank all of those people. Trust me, they're not all. A lot of them get really excited and I understand that. But yeah, we're dealing with that. I had, Silver Creek is unusually high, but water is flowing. I've had, one of the things that's upsetting me, and I know it's for the Sheriff's Department, is people go around the barricades. I don't know why they think they need to go around a barricade and try and go through the water. Barricades are up there for your safety and I have some right across from my property on 628. They've basically torn up my ditch going around the barricade because the barricade's across the way. We've been real fortunate in my section. Haven't had anybody stranded. But, you know, and you don't know what's underneath there. I mean, one of our little wire crossings, Mr. Gonzalez has looked at, we're going to repave it. I mean, all four inches of, or three inches of asphalt is gone. Nothing's left but just the base. So you never know what's down there and we don't know if culvers wash out. Been on the phone, again with Texas. I want to thank Texas. They've been running up and down the road, just like everybody else, handling all kinds of calls. Generally, when I, I had a lady call me from Blanconia. Swore up and down I was her commissioner. I told her, I'm not your commissioner, but you live in B County, so let me see what I can do. Back and forth, back and forth. Finally, Mr. Commissioner Fede has contacted me. We got her in touch with him and we went from there. So again, I'll state the same thing. If you live in B County, call any one of these commissioners and they're going to get you in the right direction. Yeah, that, I want to just update. This should be the week that they start on the student crossing Hawk System there in Skidmore. Should be starting this week. Talked to a couple of individuals over there. And also, Texas is going to do some more drainage also. So update on Baker Road. I had a release from Mortenson and the AEP site that did the, AEP station back there, the substation, they have, they have released the road back to the county. Ray is getting quality biz right now to bring that road back up to county standards. So it's pretty much been a real busy, wizzy, two weeks actually, with everything else going on. And again, I just, I just want to, I just want to thank the citizens of B County for their support and their patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for y'all's updates. From my, my desk, I'd say first of all, I'd like to thank the first responders, Mr. Gonzalez, emergency management, everybody that came out over the course of the last couple of days. We did have some stranded motorists and other individuals that did require some extraordinary services. And as everybody here is now painfully aware of it, if you didn't already know, I'm sure in this audience, everybody is already pretty aware of how dangerous fast-moving water can be. So I would echo the same cautionary statement that Commissioner Haggard made with respect to that. But thank you to everybody that came out, risked their own lives to help those, to found ourselves in difficult situations. Probably the most productive thing, and I'll restrict my comments to just this one meeting over the last couple of weeks, was I did have a productive meeting, excuse me, with the City Beale, City Manager was present, is this City Manager? Yeah, I think so, yeah. And the auditor and myself with the Tax Appraisal District Chief Appraiser, Patricia Davis. And we went through, we had, I would say, a productive and open discussion where Ms. Davis explained to us some of the difficulties that her office is facing with respect to their funding and their obligations and their dictates that come from the state. As many of you are aware, appraisal districts across the state of Texas are not under the purview of local government. Appraisal districts across the state of Texas are under the purview of the state of Texas. It is in effect an arm of the state of Texas. So they do operate under the direction of a board. And that local board, the appointees to that board are made by recommendations from our local taxing jurisdictions, which we have 14 in B County. But in any event, the, as I had commented at the last Commissioners Court meeting, when we moved to reject the appraisal district's budget, that process is nearly the statutory framework in for taxing jurisdictions that put the bill for the appraisal district. That's merely the mechanism for us to open up a dialogue with the appraisal district. If three quarters of the taxing jurisdictions don't say, I've got a problem with your budget, then the appraisal district doesn't have any statutory requirement to do anything with respect to their budget. I think we're pretty close to three quarters of the taxing jurisdictions in the county formally objecting to the appraisal district's budget. But I was also very heartened and I want to make this statement to everybody here today, as well as to the public at large, that during the course of our conversation with Ms. Davis, her takeaway was one of, I think, understanding for the precarious financial consideration and that we have with respect to how their funding request comes across in light of our restrictions on availability, on taxing availability from the state of Texas. But also her commitment that her board, and her board is, I mean, we all know, the, I think, pretty much everybody in the county knows the gentlemen that are on the board currently, and they're all to a man, wonderful, wonderful individuals who are caring and committed to the community at large. But her statement was that they, regardless of how 14 entities objected or objected to the budget, or 11 or 10, she said, just that you have or that two have, there's more than that. Find out there's six or seven. Her comment was that that's enough for us to go back and look at our budget and see, okay, taking into account, like, you know, our concerns about, you're asking for an over 7% increase in your budget. The state of Texas caps us at 3.5% without moving back to the voters. She seemed, she seemed very receptive. So I'm hopeful that regardless of the outcome of the statutory process of communicating between public bodies, that we will have some meaningful input, impact and follow-up justification as to why their budget may need to go up in certain respects or not. So that was very rambly, but I did, I guess the feeling that I would like to convey is that the meeting was very productive and I really appreciate it. And Ms. Davis coming in and sitting down with us, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to be available for that meeting. But it was good and anytime you can get governmental bodies together to talk about things in a meaningful way, in a positive manner, I think that's something that we really ought to highlight. So that's about all I've got. Moving on, Agenda Item Number 7, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to blow right by the public comment. I'm sure that wasn't intentional. Mr. Brown, I'm going to call Agenda Item Number 6, Public Comment. Mr. Brown, I had previously indicated I'd give you the floor first. If you'd like to proceed first, you may. Oh, and please remember to identify yourself before you speak.
Yes, thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Austin Brown. I'm a rural resident of B County for many years. And I would like to compliment this court because in my lifetime, I think that this is probably the best court that I have ever seen. These men are honest. They work hard and they've done their job. And I just want you to know that and that we're very pleased to have y'all doing what you're doing. In addition, I want to bring up the issue of election integrity again that was brought up at the last meeting when Judge Moore was not able to attend. But in any case, we have got to get back to an election system that can be trusted. About 20 years ago, a group of very elite billionaires decided to control this country internally through our elections. And they've done this by fooling all of us, state, county, nationwide, into using electronic voting machines. We all know that they can be hacked. We all know that we have been hacked. Many of you have been hacked. It can be done. The county has been hacked. The pipeline going to the eastern coast was recently hacked and paid a $5 million fine. This happens. It can happen. Everybody knows that. Elections can be hacked very easily. The recent election last fall was hacked. It is being audited in Arizona through auditing. Pennsylvania started auditing. We think that Georgia will be the next state to audit their election votes. The state of Texas just had a disgrace in Austin in the last session. where a group of the members walked out of the house because of the new election integrity proposal to be passed. And they walked out of the house to lower the amount of people in the house so they couldn't be voted on and went to a church. They used to go out state. They went to a church. Well, I don't know if that's out of state or if that, they couldn't get them. They have to have a court. Election integrity. We're not talking about political parties. I don't care what party you're in. All I want to know is that when we have an election, that it's honest. If another party wins, I'm good with that. If this party wins, I'm good with that. It needs to be honest. The only way you can do it is to go back like we've done it for 145 years with paper traceable ballots counted by hand. That's the only way. Otherwise, you're going to use electronic equipment to do it, which can be hacked. Don't you get it? It is simple. It is simple. It will cost money. It needs to be in the budget to be able to do this. And it needs to be done quickly because time is going by. We need to get this done. And I implore this commission to consider this and act on it, please. Thank you very much for hearing us today.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak this morning during public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Carter, you may come forward.
For the record, my name is Joe Carter. I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Brown said about this court and the fact that you put service to the public before your own interest. Another thing that he brought to mind was I visited with a veteran. He said, I was with the CIA in Afghanistan. We, our jobs was distribute money to the right people. And then we watched the votes and get the machines in the right place. Then we watched the votes. And CIA got the person they wanted elected. Back to my line. I want to thank you for your kind and patient attentions to the citizens who are sharing their hope and confidence in the good decisions of this court. The actions of this court are not, should not be considered a burden. They should be an opportunity to set ourselves apart from other places. Gives you the opportunity to implore the voters to participate in the conduct of their election after you restore the voting precincts, which everybody's in favor of. Which are, and the protocols for handling the hand-counted ballots and deal control and chain of custody. This court should send a letter to the, those who are on the voting roll, imploing them to make themselves available to the elections administrator for training and conduct of the election. This has a second important thing. When you do that, you'll put address, service requested on the envelope. This action will go far to determine who is relocated without, whether it's a forwarding address or who is relocated without forwarding address. The validation of voter rolls extends to the duty of the county clerk, but it is the purbi and responsibility of this court. Further tools for purifying voter rolls include matching records in the clerk's office, including death certificates and probate records. Absent the establishment of these protocols, which should be carried out each year, voters in B County will continue to see the names of their deceased relatives who either died in B County or had wills probate of B County and know that Commissioner's Court does not paying proper attention to voter rolls. The second opportunity is to make the most of this for B County and make it more attractive to prospective employers and the existing taxpayers who should become B County residents. I've been coming acquainted with the B Area Partnership CEO Randy Sines. I best my confidence in him and his ability to contribute to B County. The job to track employers in B County, the county needs the inventory of the resources, including professionals, trades, products of their companies available to people from residents of this county. Accomplishing this job is simple for the court. Simply compare the tax rolls, looking for out-of-county addresses to the voter rolls. Send a mail from this court letter to claim that to B County, including transparent government, economic development without inverse taxing increases, respected law enforcement and elections where their vote is counted. Lawyers should ask each non-resident to consider moving their domicile to B County, Texas. Register their vehicle here, change your address, and vote in B County where they're, where they're of B County. B County. Explain further, they should not consider working from anywhere, but they can work from B County, Texas. A lot of people just hadn't heard that yet. These non-resident taxpayers often have professional skills. Companies that produce products that are needed by prospective employers could consider relocating to B County. I'm always amazed when folks like me at the gas station can tell me their property in B County and their company somewhere else. And more than ever, these folks are looking for a change in the environment in B County. Should be that change. I ask you to consider the value of these simple steps to bring to the future of B County. Consider how this relatively low-cost step will help the B Area Partnership in attracting resources and benefits. Please make the choice to communicate to everyone. B County's home, low taxes, honest government ensures our votes are properly counted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Is there anybody else that would like to address the court this morning? Yes, sir, Doc.
My name is Rodney Schallermer. I've been a resident for about 30 years here. I'm here to speak in favor of returning to tax ballots, tabulation and transmission. What we're seeing play out nationwide is that our election system is flawed. I don't think we need to sit here and think that the federal government is going to solve that problem for us. Since the fall of Adam, there's been liars and cheaters. As our society deteriorates, that becomes more prevalent. For whatever reason, power, financial gain, or whatever their purpose is, it's going to continue. Since we've gone to electronic computerized systems, I'm not a computer expert. I've talked to some people I think are pretty savvy in computers. And even one individual who had a computer security system, he said, there's no way you're going to stop hacking. The government's been hacked, the military, these are the people with the most secure systems out there. He told me that is, once you patch one system, they're already working on another. I've heard people talk about, they've talked about the systems, oh, they were plugged into the internet. Well, that's, that's fine. That's a direct access. But I've been told if you solve that problem, all it takes is a small chip and you've got wireless connection to the machine. Manual tabulation machines can be adjusted, you know, somebody can mess with those. That's been proven in the past. I've seen, for whatever reason, I've seen some, and I'm not saying a situation here in the business I was in and other businesses where people in small communities, small towns, small businesses, they tend to follow rather than lead. I don't know why that is because most of the time, the smaller people, smaller communities have the best ideas. You just look at a major corporation and the waste and everything, and they think they're pretty special when they can learn, learn a lot from the small businesses and small communities and how they run their situation. So all that being said, I'm just here to, I think, oh, I've also talked to, you know, just talking to individuals and if it's a concern about people working the holes or all that kind of thing. I mean, I think there's plenty of people out there willing to do that in support of B County and fair elections in B County. I think it was already stated that those that win an election need to be confident in the true and fair election so that they can govern going forward, knowing that, oh, this might have questioned you, but at least the election was fair. Those that lose an election need to be confident in the system that knows, that they know that next time it will be, they'll have a fair shot at winning it the next go around. So I would encourage the court to return to, and I realize there's other fraud out there. I think you have to, you can't group it all together. There's all kinds of voter fraud. We're talking, I'm talking about the machines that can be manipulated. And if it doesn't get solved, we can't be in a cocoon here and think that it's just a federal problem because if that situation continues, it's just going to filter down. Eventually, it's going to get to us too, in the county level. So I'm here to support returning it to the, the only way I see possible to determine fair, the fairest election, and that's paper ballots. And I urge the court to lead on this issue and not follow.
Thank you, Attorney General. Is there anybody else that would like to make comments? Yes, sir, please come forward.
My name is Jimmy Hunt. I'm from Tynan, Texas. I'm originally from here in Beeville, but I live in Tynan, Texas. And I just wanted to say that, you know, we talked about this the other day at the meeting. And I'm willing to volunteer to help. But what I really wanted to say was, all the farmers where I'm from, and they're all farmers, are in the fields again today trying to clean up so they can get ready to harvest, which is having all kinds of problems. But I had 15 to 20 of them that could not make it here today, but they wanted me to stand up for them, to let everybody know that they feel the same way about the election. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to make public comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Thomas McGregor. And I just want to give an anecdotal perspective. I was the deputy command chaplain in Iraq during OIF III. It was a time when the Iraqis were holding their elections. The command chaplain, I was the deputy command chaplain. The command chaplain asked if I would put together a prayer service in preparation for their elections. And I will tell you that there was, perhaps many of you saw on the news, the many Iraqis walking out with a purple finger after they had voted. They had the assurance that their vote, their name, their fingerprint and their vote counted. You talk about a happy group of people. Now, we don't necessarily need to go to having your fingers stained with ink. And, but we do have to have confidence that my vote, your vote, all of our votes accurately represent our intentions as we vote for those who we desire. So I think that we as Americans, we get very sophisticated. But I think we need to return to very simple things where the common folk and the intelligentsia all have great confidence that your vote counted. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to make comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Harold Butler. I've lived here in Beeville since '84. I've heard a number of complaints over the years about local elections, about some of the fraud that took place there. And I somewhat believe it. And then, where are you going with electronics? I'm an initial Christian for so many years. I know what electronics can do. Just a little flip of the lever or hack here and it'll change your vote. And I want my vote to count for what I want to vote for, not, and the other people that are casting votes, their vote counts for the person that they vote for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Is there anybody else that would like to make comments this morning? Okay, thank you all for your comments. One more? Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much again for those public comments. And we will now move on with the agenda. Moving on to agenda item number seven, the following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioner's Court has been furnished documentation on each item. And all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a commissioner or county judge.
Motion to approve is presented.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Ms. Counselor?
I did have one correction, well, two corrections actually, to my budget amendments that I'm certifying our COVID relief fund. I failed to put the word reimbursement on the first one and the second one, which is Fund 77, certifying it coming in and then certifying it going to where it needs to go. And I believe that that word reimbursement needs to be stuck in there. So I already corrected the clerk's file. I just wanted the minutes to reflect.
Is that just on your notes underneath the?
It's on the description.
Right, that's audited or certified.
Certified revenue from reimbursed COVID-19 cases. Yes, sir.
I'll amend my motion.
I'll amend my second. Motion to, is there anything else that sticks out or anything we need to look at, concern?
No, sir. Unless there's any other questions.
You have something?
Just while you're on these items, I wanted, there are new hires there. I want to introduce our newest deputy.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Short Lieutenant. He's from Beeville, he's got his roots here. His mom's on the fire car, but he's been around quite a bit. But he just recently came back from San Antonio. And this is really his first week of actually doing anything. But he's been oriented, been through the HR and stuff, and I just wanted to make y'all.
Welcome, deputy. Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very smiling face out there, you know, with you.
If you see a car going in excess of the recommended speed limit, it's not me.
Or me.
Welcome, welcome. Anything else on this agenda for discussion?
I'm sure.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thanks, gentlemen. I'm going to do a little reorganization. So we'll move on to discuss and consider action on the following items. I'm going to call agenda item number eight later on in the meeting, likely after, likely towards the end. I have the, I have some additional stuff that I'd like to give y'all an opportunity to look at before we actually take time up on that agenda item. So we'll skip by eight and go to agenda item number nine. Approved policy formulation committee's recommendation to have the B County grant management policy as a new section in the B County personnel policy handbook. I have this as Mr. Willow.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I got a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Willow, do you have anything to share with us?
I agree with your approval.
Wonderful. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 10. Approved expo request for auditorium fee waiver from the Boys and Girls Club of Beeville for their casino night on July 24th, 2021. So I have a motion to approve and a second. Mr. Rodriguez, do you still want to say anything or?
Thanks. I see we have the director of the Boys and Girls Club in the back. I don't know if you want to come up and say anything, sir?
Sure. Good morning, Judge. Well, John, so these guys do, every year they have a fundraiser and it helps, of course, with the facilities and taking care of the kiddos out there. And so what they'd like to do is get a, they're requesting a, a discount on the fee so that they can utilize more of the funding that's raised for the fee.
Discount or waive?
I think we reserve the fee with maintenance.
It'll be free. Once again, Willie summed it up pretty well. It's for our casino night. It's our, we do our one big fundraiser a year as a way to go to the community and garner support for our operations, for our programming. We were very fortunate last year. We held our casino night in January. And of course, we know that less than two months later, everything changed. We postponed from our normal January event this year to the summer. And we're very excited to see the response we've been getting from the community. And so we are excited to see what this year is going to hold. We are at this time open. We've been open without, with the exception of the full shutdown period. And we have been servicing between 75 and 95 kids a day this summer. So we are very excited to see that the kids are returning and getting a little normalcy back in their lives.
Just a comment up ahead. You know, seeing what you guys do with these kiddos and looking around at the rest of the nation, when you've got kids going berserk and doing all this kind of stuff. I admire what y'all are doing and really appreciate it. I really do. I really do. You're giving them a structure, a place to go, things to do. Use up that energy. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, ditto. Couldn't have said it better if I said it myself. Commissioner, I can try though.
I can try. I'll give a little.
I want to also add, because of that, it relieves a lot of pressure on the Sheriff's Department, City Police Department, you know, after hours running around chasing down things and of course, the court systems.
Yeah, absolutely, no.
It helps out all over, all over everything. You're doing a fantastic job.
Appreciate it, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, Mr. Corcoran, Mr. Rodriguez. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eleven. Approved Expo Request for Auditorium Fee Waiver from Ladies Night Out for their events on March 1, 2022.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Mr. Rodriguez? Is there any need for, are you here for Ladies Night Out?
I am. I have the B County Ladies Night Out Committee. I'm Lola Castro with Prosperity Bank and Monmouth City. As secretary, we want to thank you all for always waiving fee every year. It's very important to us to do this fundraiser. But all the, the funds that we raise to Prisoners' Bond Eagle Hospital, it's been very, been on the committee for like two, three years. But those ladies who've come before me, who've set the foundation, they're amazing and always contributed back to this hospital 100%.
Yes, we have to thank you for everything that you guys do. That's a wonderful program that really helps out our local hospital.
Great program. We do recommend that we move forward with it. Everything is in order, dated, respect.
Thank you, sir. If there's no further discussion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Twelve. North B County Emergency Services District Number Two Board Members Update. Commissioner DeWitt?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. We, the North B County Service District Number Two basically is the Pettis Fire Department, Toledo Fire Department, and Normanna Fire Department. And two of the board members have resigned. And what we're doing is ratifying the replacements. But I'd like to call attention to one of the board members, Mr. Holly Morris. For those of you that know Mr. Morris, he'll be 100 years old July 27th. Now, I, I don't know how to express how someone has dedicated their entire life to public service like this gentleman has. It could be he's going to get off the board because he's turning 100 or he would stay longer. But most of us have met Mr. Morris at fundraisers and around town. He's a decorated veteran. He's done a fantastic job. And it's folks like him that we need to have in public service that have the forefront and the desire to work for the people and do what's best for the people. And I'll read off the names of the district new members, if you will, the new members. We have, these are the members. Louis Schmidt from Toledo, president. Lois Tiddy, Toledo, treasurer. Francis Moses Pettis, secretary. Bobby Gomez Pettis, member. And Sam McCoy, Normanna, member. As you can see from where they're from, they all represent that particular area of that emergency district in those fire departments. So what I'm asking the court to do in my motion is to ratify the members of the emergency district, service district number two, and to give a special recognition to Mr. Holly Morris for his work.
I'll take that in the form of a motion.
In motion, yes, sir. I'll second.
Got a second? Give it to Commissioner Lenny this time.
All right.
Is there any further discussion? None. Everybody that knows Holly likes her. She's really quite the treasure of B County, so. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Approved Contract for Court Collection Services Between B County and Graves Humphreys Stoll, GHS. Ms. Cantor, I've got you down as somebody to give us some information on this.
This is the contract that goes through the JPs for their collections. I did reach out to the four JPs. I only received responses from JP two and one that they are still good with that. So I just assumed that they're all good with going forward with the renewal.
Move to approve. I think it's a five-year renewal.
Second, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Approved Groundwater Drainage Agreement Between B County and Sylvia Rodriguez for the Rodriguez Drainage Project Agreement Located Off Sims Drive, Skidmore, Texas. As per Texas Transportation Code Section 254.005, authority to provide drainage, Thai Road and Bridge Department. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good morning, Attorney General. I'm the water administrator. But this is just basically some drainage. We're going off, kind of off 519, Sims Drive. If you see the Google Earth map that I sent you, you'll see the, the area that we are talking about and wanted to clean up. And unless y'all have any questions for me, I request that you, can we request? Lake over there, do you like it?
There's one there. It's already there. Yeah, but let's not go there, Commissioner. Gentlemen, I'm going to make a motion to approve this. I'll segue with a comment. I have a comment.
A motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yes, sir. The only, the only question I have, I don't have any problem with the contract at all, but it shows an ending date of 2021. Is that what we want? The end date on the contract is 2021.
No, it should be open.
If, if you look on that last page where it's the ending date, it shows 2021. I didn't think that was correct.
Oh, okay. The 2021 should be removed.
Yes, if you would, yes, it would have to be open.
Yeah, yeah. The 2021 needs to be removed and just the word indefinite. This is, this again, I want to comment. This is one of the things that Mr. Gonzalez and I are talking about. This is a lady who, out of the kindness, who were hard contacted, Mr. Gonzalez, to help with that area. Most of y'all don't know where she is. Behind the old roundup, all of that backup in there. That's why I said that's a plan. There's already a lake there. And this is part of draining this water.
That, the mosquitoes in that area are biggest bugs. It's big.
A little bigger. They roam this year. They're a little bit. I recommend you do not get out of your vehicle. I would recommend that that changes. Yes, I'd like to amend my motion to say to remove the 2021 from the last blank spot.
No, I'll amend my second to the last one.
We have an amended motion and amended second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Update Discussion and Possible Action Regarding B County COVID-19 Status, Preparedness, and Contingency Planning. I'm putting this back on the agenda, just stay on the agenda as we continue to monitor and watch the Delta variant of, of the virus. I don't want to get caught flat footed in the event that we have an opportunity to take advantage of some program or we have a need to take advantage of the placement of this agenda. I don't know. Mr. Willow, I don't know if you have any input, but yeah, you have the floor now.
With doom and gloom coming up.
Yeah.
Mike Willow, COVID-19.
Prepare for coordinator.
Based on the national news today, just to let you know that 16% of all new COVID cases are of the D variants throughout the United States. 8% of the people with COVID that admitted to the hospital is with the D variant. So the rise has gone up 8% for hospitals. None here in B County yet. I'm happy to say that that's been reported here. Texas is at 49.5% of vaccinations. And it's one of the highest ones in the nation. So that's kind of a, a good thing. So basically, we're looking at things to motivate people to get the shots still. If we go with the America Recovery Act, if we do that, they're allowing us to have a lottery or have a giveaway or something like that to encourage people to get their shots. So it's something I'd definitely like to look at in the future if we can do it. First thing coming to mind, you know, if we have 100 people sign up, give them an air conditioner, you know, buy one from Home and give them an air conditioner, something like that, you know, something that can be used. But I mean, that's just the first thing that comes to mind. So, but there's a lot of possibilities in that America Recovery Act to help us should the variants get here in B County.
Thank you, Mr. Willow. Are there any questions or other comments? Okay, moving on. At this point in time, the B County Commissioner's Court is going to go into executive session. Public notice is given that the B County Commissioner's Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed on the agenda pursuant to the authority granted under the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Immediately before any executive session, the specific section or sections of Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, that provide statutory authority will be announced. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioner's Court may, in an open session, take such, such action as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Executive Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Consultation with Legal Counsel. Subject apply to B County Law Enforcement Center. Thank you all for being here today. We're going to need to cut off the fee. You're welcome to stay. The time is 10:02. And you're welcome to stay out in the courthouse somewhere, but you can't stay here. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. Thank you all for your participation. And for the Commissioners, it'll probably be